Okay, we'll call and need to order. Johns?
Here.
Julio?
Yes.
Tyler?
Here.
Banetta?
Here.
Well?
Here.
Okay. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda? I just asked Mr. Green, Chair of the Under-Superintendent, the update on the purchase of the Fiducia. That would be my only addition. Okay, then, minutes from the last board meeting. Any questions, changes, additions? Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes from December 8.
I'm going to have ten minutes.
I'll second. Johns?
Yes.
Julio?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banetta?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Alright, so, we have some students here. I think we have, first on the agenda is faculty, so, or and audience. So, first, do we have any audience members who would like to address the board that was not faculty or students? Okay, do you have any faculty that would like to address the board? Okay, do you have some students who would like to address the board?
I do have this as a staff member, I do have one, but it's in response to a student, so should I wait for the student to go?
Oh, okay, so you want him to go first?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Sure.
Hey, Chris, you can use that microphone right there and just turn it on. Okay. So, my name is Chris Jenner, I am the class president for this year class, and I'm just coming up today to seek, our class is seeking board approval for our class trip to Seattle this spring. We were hoping to get board approval to take a trip, a class trip to Seattle, leaving March 17th, which is Thursday, and returning to Surrey Monday the 21st. We'd be taking the Amtrak out to Seattle and back for chaperones, we're gonna go with three chaperones, at least one teacher, preferably two, and then one parent, possibly two. For transportation, we're taking the Amtrak. We thought that gives students more comfort to walk around, be able to stretch out, not get stuck, confined for quite so long. While we're in Seattle, we've got hotels picked out, plan on taking public transportation for any of our getting around along with walking, considering where our hotel is and where a lot of the attractions we're going to are, a lot would be within walking distance, and a lot of the things that aren't are within a quick bus ride. Beyond that, as far as while we're in Seattle, we've got a few educational things planned out. There's a Gold Rush Museum, a Pop Culture Museum, and then a glass museum, and then while we're at the Space Needle, the Space Needle actually has a whole floor that's full of infographics and educational things about the city of Seattle and the building of the Space Needle, so we're really hoping to engage with that. We know with where the world's at today, COVID's a really big issue, so we've put a lot of thought into that. We know masks are gonna be required for a lot of our attractions over in Seattle, as well as while we're on the Amtrak. As a class, we have voted to be okay with that and work with the restrictions that we know are there. As far as vaccine mandates, we know a lot of our attractions as well as our hotel are going to require students to either be fully vaccinated or to have had a negative COVID test within the last 72 hours. So we've got our timeframe figured out of making sure everybody's tested while we're here at a testing site before we leave, which will get us cleared so that we'll be able to do all of our attractions in Seattle and then return comfortably. If anybody tests positive, obviously they won't be able to go, but that was something we knew we might run into if you have COVID, though we agreed as a class you shouldn't have been going anyways. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd feel free to ask and I'll answer to the best of my ability.
How long of a bus drive is it, I mean, that bus ride Amtrak?
Amtrak, it would be an overnight train ride, which we'd get on the train in Minot at about 9:00 AM, and then we'd be on the train going first through all of Montana and then passing through the mountains in Glacier National Park. We'd get, we'd be reaching Glacier National Park about as the sun's setting and then the train would take us through the night and then we'd get into Seattle about 10:30, 11:00 in the morning. So it would be an overnight trip. Coming back, we'd get on the train in Seattle at about 4:40 in the afternoon and then we'd get back into Minot at about 9:30. Monday morning, or Monday night, actually.
Sounds like a fun trip.
So, did your class vote on this?
Yes, we have had two class votes, just to make sure everybody's on board, everybody's okay with it. At our last class meeting, we voted 12 to 8 to go to Seattle with 10 students preferring not to vote. So, as a class, we have agreed to this. We expect there's still probably gonna be between 1 to 4 students who don't go, but I mean, that was an issue we were gonna run into anyways, no matter where we went with people not being happy. So we thought this was the best option that made the most people happy and gave us a lot of fun things to do.
What's the cost of it?
The cost of the whole trip is gonna be about $12,500. Right now, with 1,000 set aside for graduation, like most classes do, between how much we have in our account plus how much we've got promised from sponsorships, we've got about 9,000 to put towards the trip. Now, we've still got quite a few more fundraisers planned for this year between clothing order forms and concessions and some more talent shows and wrap-up ticket things that we plan to sell. Right now, our current cost per student is about $130 if we were to stop. And then, so students would have to cover whatever we don't raise, which we expect to be about $50 a student to go, plus then their meals while we're there, which would be two meals a day as our hotel has breakfast.
Great presentation.
Are there any other questions from anybody?
So, were there any other options?
A secondary option that we looked into was Billings, Montana. That was, I think, the second most popular option. We weren't necessarily against that option. We ended up going with Seattle because we just thought there'd be more things for us to do. And I know we had some students who would prefer the long train ride to a long bus ride, because going to Billings would be about an eight-hour bus ride, which a lot of students weren't comfortable with. So, this was what we ended up with.
Have you ever ridden on a train before, or has?
I have.
The majority of your class, have they even been on a train before?
A lot of them have not. We've still got, I'd say probably a half dozen people who have. I've been on a train, it was several years ago now, but we really liked the aspect of being able to get up, walk around, move around. I know we had some students who weren't super enthused about being expected to sleep on the train, but we knew going to such a big destination, there was a couple cutbacks we're gonna have to make and that was one of the sacrifices that we agreed on.
I guess my only concern is that 10 people decided not to participate in the vote.
Those 10 people, from what we got from their feedback, was that it was not so much that they were afraid to vote or against going to either places, it was more that they were happy with either option and wanted to let the rest of the class decide as they felt they'd be happy with no matter what was chosen.
Oh, okay. Makes sense, yeah. More questions? Okay, so, we need a motion.
Do you want to hear the advisors first?
Sure.
Hi, guys. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I'm the senior, one of the senior class advisors this year, it's your name, Richard, the business director here at Surrey. And I've been working with this group all school year here and trying to help them do some planning and look at the different options that they have in front of them. And first of all, I just wanna commend Chris on his leadership. He is a very articulate, well-spoken young man who has a future, a really bright future. And so I commend him for the passion that he has shown for his class and the dedication that he has to them. So, I am not here on any sort of personal issue against anyone in the class at all. I just wanna make sure that the board understands that as an advisor, I have deep concerns about this idea that the senior class has voted on and that they would like to do. From a business standpoint, I look at numbers and I like to look at the objective numbers. I do not feel it's in the class's financial best interest at this point to make reservations on monies that they do not have completely fundraised when they're planning a trip for March and we're coming up on the end of January. We do not have anything officially set in stone. As far as fundraising at this point, the fundraising that we've done have consisted of football games, concessions, and it's been a difficult fundraising journey. I actually decided to try to help these guys out because I know a lot of the students here, this year especially, have jobs outside of school and are crazy busy, and I totally get that. So I came up with an Ads for Grads fundraiser using my own marketing skills and partnering up with another staff member to try to make fundraising as easy as possible and to connect with the community. I thought that would be a really fun way to get the community involved and know that we appreciate them at the school. So that fundraiser is solely falling back on me and my creative design to follow through with those area businesses and give them some quality advertising to reach out into our Surrey school community. So, for that said, it's not for lack of care for these kids or a lack of desire to go. I would love to go and support and be a part of the senior trip. However, with the plan that the leadership of this class has presented and continue to promote upon, I am not comfortable with the cost-cutting decisions that they've made as far as the hotel that he mentioned is a three-star hotel right next to the Seattle Space Needle and I've been to Seattle. I do not believe that is a safe option for a hotel. And also looking into the COVID-19 measures, unfortunately, that's the reality. That's the reality that we live in and as we travel across country, Seattle does have a county-wide, it's Kings County, I believe, Kings County has a county-wide mandate where it is full vaccination with full boosters, proof of vaccination is required to go into any of the city's popular events. And event centers such as the aquarium, the Space Needle, they have a city pass, all of those included in the city pass require proof of vaccination fully or a negative COVID test done through the PCR. It has to be an official PCR test administered and that proof of a negative result has to be within 72 hours of entry into the event center. So for me as an advisor, I do not feel comfortable taking a group, which hopefully would be the majority of the group, of 28 students, with the possibility of the unknown of what if some of those students are not able to attend an event. How many advisors do we have back at the hotel? Which the hotel also has COVID-19 restrictions for the exercise, cool area, and the food services. And I did call, I've been checking and doing a lot of research on this for these guys so that they know I do want them. I wanted them to be able to have this happen, but just looking at the details, I'm not in good conscience. I cannot, I cannot put my sample approval on the trip. So unfortunately, that's just the reality that I see. I did say, since they had a vote on this, I respect the voting process. I believe rules and orders are very, it's very important. I try to teach the kids that in my business classes. However, I know we did do a hand vote, a visual vote, and I would like to recommend that we do a revote by ballot so that students don't have the pressure of looking at other classmates and wondering what they're thinking. And so that's my recommendation as an advisor. I'd like to see them come back and do another class meeting with secret ballot vote before we proceed. But just so the board is aware, as an advisor, if the vote continues to be for Seattle, I am uncomfortable going and I will step back as a senior class trip advisor. My husband and I will not be attending that trip for liability reasons. So, thank you for your time. I've presented what I have so far. I kind of rushed to get it ready for you guys tonight. So if you have questions, please feel free to contact me or as you're looking over here, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the data.
I have a question. Did it at the end, your husband?
Yes. He is actually the archery coach and it's one of those things where we have taken several students on youth trips before I visited with administration. He works closely with.
And the class approved that?
As a sub as well. As far as going through the senior trip advising, we could certainly take that up to a vote. I would actually love to see more parents come too. So if anybody, I know your son is one of my students, love having him in class. So if you have any other, if there are any other advisors that would love to step in, the more the merrier, I think.
Well, that's, that's kind of why I asked.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that the parents do a lot.
Absolutely.
Of help with the fundraising and paying the class dues and that's why I was a little concerned.
No, 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 no.
That they need one of the people going. I think it should be parents and then maybe ones from Seattle.
Yeah, absolutely. And last year, the reason why he attended was it was one of those things as far as driving ability, time off, it's tough. We asked actually several different parents last year before we ended up going that route. So absolutely, as a fellow parent, I totally get it. And I love, I absolutely love seeing parent development. And anyone who is a senior class parent, absolutely, contact me. That would be a first one. I, it's one of those things where I, last year, I'm just going off of my second year here at Surrey School. So, yeah, every class is different, so more than a year, that would be wonderful.
So if there's 28 students, how many adults do we need to have to go on the trip?
Well, okay, so for a Billings trip, that's going to be a different option. For a Seattle trip, like I said, I'm not comfortable mostly because of that reason. If we take an Amtrak cross-country, liability-wise, we've got kids moving around that train, there are many different stops. I'm not comfortable having a limited amount of advisors. There would have to be enough advisors to sit with each, wherever the section of kids are sitting. So that's another reason why I.
And I just wanna interject here because I did go on one other senior trip Ms. Brown was with, and we did take the train and it actually worked out great. We didn't have one single problem the whole time. In fact, there was barely anybody on the train on the way back. We actually got to lay down and sleep.
And that's wonderful, and I would bet if this is something that you as a board decide.
There has to be a certain amount of adults for a kid.
Well, you gotta figure something, most of these kids are gonna be 18.
And I will note too, as far as Amtrak, that is another COVID-19 reason why I won't be attending if it's a Seattle trip because they do require masks whether you're vaccinated or not for the entire time that you're on the train. And if you look at the itinerary for 27 hours, I'm uncomfortable masking for 27 hours and then another 27 hours on the way back, especially when we get to Seattle and we also have those mandates as well. I'm just personally unable to do that, so I would step back as advisor respectfully. So if the board decides that this is something that they wish to pursue. I just wanted to make sure my advisor notes were made note to board.
Chris, here and back, have you talked to enough people to know that you have at least three advisors going on the trip? If she stepped back?
I had said that we would have at least three or five, because I'd hope they got. Two parents right now who have verbally committed to being willing to go. And then beyond that, we have gotten two teachers who have said that they would be happy to go as long as they can find proper childcare. I know, we've only talked to a really limited number of staff, so we still got a lot of options for staff that we can talk to that we can see if they're interested in going. So, and beyond the parents who have verbally committed directly, we've had a lot of students who have chosen with advisors offering that their parents would be interested in going. And I feel like advisors, really, we are happy to take whatever number that the board feels necessary.
I just, I guess for me, I'm not all about COVID and I don't want it to hold anybody hostage. So, these seniors have worked extremely hard to raise money for 12 years for a trip, but I would personally like to see them take the trip that they wanna take.
And I'll speak to that as far as just having a revote. And I honestly would love to see the trip that they wanna take as well. And I feel as an advisor and watching the group, there were several who did not cast a vote. It was a, it was a vote of 14 out of the class of 28. And so 14 voted in favor of continuing to plan for Seattle. And I did have students approach me afterwards in private conversation, and I can provide names if necessary, who are wanting more time to look over the new data.
We don't have a lot of time, though.
I understand that.
So maybe we can take it back to the class and ask the class if they'd like to do a revote? And if they don't, then we don't revote?
And that's what I would advise, is revoting in a private ballot form so that everyone has a voice.
I have a few comments.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
I used to live in the Seattle area, and even back then it was a rough area. So, 18 or not, it's a school-sponsored function.
You can always go after me if you want to, after you graduate and it's not a school function. I know that I'm just saying, if that's why he's gonna say no, they can all withdraw.
Oh, no, there's, there's a whole plethora of reasons why I'm gonna say no, so.
Were there any other questions, or should I make it done?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The least of which is not funded, first off. It's a rough area, that area where the Rock and Roll Museum is and all that stuff. Very rough. And like COVID or not, believing it or not, the Seattle/Washington area is a lot more draconian in their requirements. So no matter what we think, they're still gonna have to abide by what they do there. Not least of which to be concerned about the chaperones supervising all the kiddos there with the rampant, rampant drug use that is literally on the street corners and the alleyways there.
I can understand you, I'm sorry.
You can't understand me? Do you need me to speak up? Okay, the drug use in Seattle is rampant. It's everywhere, it's on the street corners, it's in the alleyways, it's probably in the hotel as well. Getting to it, it's not a hard thing. So having the necessary chaperones in place, I think, is important. And on this trip particularly, especially in sleeping cabins provided, on a train that we don't control, it's not subjected to just us. You have other adults walking around and the amount of drugs and trafficking that occurs on the Amtrak itself is ridiculous amounts. So if you want a school-sponsored trip, where you want me to say, hey, let's, let's put all these kiddos with minimum supervision on an overnight train to a place where it's gonna be hard to supervise them anyway. Totally appreciate where you're coming from, they have worked very hard. They have raised the money, they did outstanding job presenting the information, really did. And I appreciate all that, and I do think they should be able to take what they wanna take. I just, I don't wanna put the school's stamp of approval on something that is not feasible. I mean, it's not paid for, and I know the kids can pay $130 to $50 depending on what you're able to get. What kind of system do we have in place for checking the background information of the chaperones that are not school employees to make sure they're not sex offenders, to make sure they're not felons, that kind of stuff? We would have to think about these kind of things, so. I mean, you laugh, but you know, I'm not gonna expose my kids to that, I don't know. That's where I'm at.
I think just like taking all this stuff in, it's really hard to give a certain amount to it because I do think that the senior class should get to pick what they wanna do, but you also haven't really gave a definite number on this many adults are going to be coming. And this adult, like this many staff people are gonna come, you gave a lot of babies, a lot of, well, they were by childcare. So I think I'd tell there's a definite answer.
Would you like to see so they know what kind of answer to come back and give you? How many are coming? That's fantastic. Everyone's coming, though. Are the adults a certain number at all? Is that question? Why are they asked that question? There has to be a certain number of first-class children. But are you looking to, and then give you a certain number?
Right, right, I'm sorry. And I'd already asked if those are happening.
No, I don't think they're gonna, no. When I went on a senior trip, there was just three of us, we were all females. Right, but my question is like, do you want him to come back and say, okay, we have four people going and here's where they are?
Yes.
Okay. Just so he knows when to come back and give to you.
Yes.
I think just to be fair and for the respect to Mrs. Richards for presenting her advice as well, I would love to see it go back to a private vote. I would have to agree that the safety issue in Seattle, I would not be for it. But again, it's the seniors' decision. So, so I mean, if that's what they come up with, that's what I'll vote for, but I would like to see it go back to one more vote.
Okay, I think that's where we're leaving it then. If you could come to the next board meetings until February, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask one question for Chris? Chris, could you do me a favor and bring in budget next time as well? Because we'd like to break down. We've been verbally forced in the past and we cannot have that happen. Just let us know what the budget is. Thank you.
So, if you're planning a trip for March, coming back in the second week of February is probably not appropriate. They would have had to already have bought tickets on Amtrak, as well as booked hotels?
I'm open to a special meeting at any time, as soon as they're ready.
Okay. So that sounds like, if you could communicate with Mr. Richards to give us that information or if you wanna email us directly or go with Mr. Gerdy, whatever it is, but we'll set up a special meeting just to hear that request and to approve or deny it?
Just to be sure, just to clarify what you were asking or stating. So if we did not approve it, could they take those monies out and take their own trip afterwards?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that right?
Well, they're a, as a class. I mean, legally, I think they could do whatever they want after their meeting and graduate, but could they take that money out?
Yep.
Or?
Would it be still school-sponsored? Why would it have to be board-approved?
The school money?
Oh, they do, they, they, they reason.
I know, but we've had other.
Yeah, classes, other classes like one in, yep, one in the June.
But my question is, would it have to still be board-approved?
Not if it's after graduation.
If it's after graduation, it does not have to be board-approved?
Not responsible for that.
Okay.
Doesn't any money that passed through the school's accounting system have to be approved, though?
I would have to check on that, Jim, I'm not sure.
I think that would be a good, a good question to ask. Even if we could, instead of dispersing the money out, you know, as the bills came in, if we could put it into someone else's account? Or I'm just, I'm just wondering if the board is not going to approve it, is it possible for them to still take the trip? I think that's important for them to know, for us to know, too. Okay, should we approve it or not? I think we have to wait till we hear from them. They will get a hold of someone to sort of schedule something with the board, right?
Yeah, probably with Mr. Gerdy. Within the end, I'm hoping we should be able to give a date, I'm sure, on Wednesday for the special meeting. I'd like to get back tomorrow, but I can't promise anything tomorrow. So we'll say today's Wednesday, so by Friday.
Well, okay, be careful, though, because we want just a few things, right? So we want one, a special, and a ballot and election.
Have the special meeting on Friday, I'm saying. Give you a date for the special meeting.
And so you'll be able to have, whatever the date is, you'll be able to set up something for chaperones and everything. You'll have, you'll have chaperones, a budget, and then.
The ballot vote.
And then the ballot voting, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Perfect, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other students? Or faculty? Okay. Here and I will move to the superintendent.
In front of you, you have the Health and Safety Smart Start Plan. We are mandated to bring this to the board every six months, just to have you look at it, approve it again. We did not change anything in this plan. This plan gives us a lot of flexibility in case we need to wear masks or do distance education. So, we're just required to bring this up to you. And approve it again.
Do we have to approve it?
Yep.
Okay, I'll offer a motion to approve or re-approve the Health and Safety. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve or re-approve the Health and Safety Smart Restart Plan.
So, did you, the three school board members, were you a part of writing this? Oh, twenty twenty-one, sorry. All revised in twenty twenty-one.
It was revised last June.
And we weren't a part of writing it, but we were a part of the approval process on it. And if I, so it says, I remember the first approval, it says revised ten twenty-nine twenty, I can't remember those revisions.
Yep.
And then this one's revised in six nine twenty-one. You and I, I can't remember, do you remember what it revised?
I do not remember that. We just, I remember when we revised it, we just put a lot of main instead of bill. Just so that we have the flexibility. And a lot of plans that needs face-to-face, in-school instruction.
Well, honestly, I think you guys have done a great job, and we didn't spend really short this week, so. And last week.
We're thriving. I mean, a lot of students there, so.
I heard you guys were a really good club.
You will be.
I'm gonna do dishes as well.
So I appreciate all that work that everyone has done to kind of step up and help, and help our needed. So is there a motion to approve the, or re-approve this plan?
I haven't read all the way through, but I do trust that everything will continue the way it is and that the.
And this is a living document as well. If there's something, if there's a breakout that we just have to change, something we can meet and change, it's just a living document.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Health and Safety Smart Restart Plan.
I'll second it.
John?
Yes.
Antonio?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy to tell you that we did get the North Dakota bus grant. It's twenty-five percent of a bus. So we were doing some calculations. Bad thing about the bids that, the new bids that you see here, ones from Harlow's, ones from Harley's. They are, we got the bids back in October for this grant. And those bids are already, are not high enough, they're up another five percent at least. So the bids that you see right here add another probably thousand, five thousand dollars to those new vehicles. Because there was a price increase since then. We did find a used bus, it's a twenty-twenty seventy-one passenger with only fifteen thousand miles. Deducted grant, it would only cost us fifty-six thousand two twelve, less than like twelve hundred dollars for shipping. We're looking at our fleet and looking to the future. And if we want to bring another route next year to cover the in-town and some of the rural, we need another bus. There's just no questions about it. So that's some information for you right there. We also have the chance of getting another grant, that's twenty thousand dollars for, that's a federal bus grant. So I'm hoping we'll get that one as well, to help our fleet in the future.
Would that be, will you find that to dispurchase, or would that be?
No, it's a separate purchase, yes. So we were doing some looking. Vehicle replacement, if you looked at your expenditures, I did have a hundred and forty-six thousand down this year. Right now we have a hundred and three thousand three seventy-two left. We did approve the mini-bus, if we can get that, that's still in the works. That's thirty thousand dollars, so the remaining as well, seventy-three thousand three seventy-two left in vehicle replacement. Also want to draw attention to like the repair and maintenance for busing. Last year we were thousands and thousands into that line item. This year we're still sitting at fifty-three thousand four twenty-seven left in that. Chuck has been doing all the repairs in-house, so we didn't have to take it to Wesley's yet or to Corder Farm. So that count is looking, our plan is looking really well. So I'm just asking if that's something that we're interested using this grant on. We could, we could pay, we owe thirty-two thousand three, or E thirty-three on bus seven. We could pay that off and get a loan for this next bus, or I think that we would have enough for to pay for the bus.
Can you just give me a loadout? I get, I feel like we're always talking about buses, I'm not even sure which ones we can have and don't have. Can you just tell me, like, what buses do we have, what are they?
Yep, I should bring in the years, but bus two and bus four are route buses right now. They are, I think, two thousand eleven, both of them are around that age. So they're about ten, twelve years old, they're seen as better days. I know bus two, we put in quite a bit of money in the last few years, not this year, but I think we already put thirty thousand dollars in the bus two. We do have bus seven, which is a backup slash activity bus. So basically, bus seven, the boys' basketball team will use when they go out. That's bus, yeah, bus seven. Bus one is girls' basketball, uses bus seven, activity bus, football uses bus seven for activity bus. And that's, those two, bus one and bus seven are fairly new, I do believe. I don't know the years, I would have to get you the years on those, but those are really good running buses. We do have the Nedrose bus that we swapped for sprinkler system as a backup bus. We do have bus six that we have, that if we get this grant, we will have to dispose of bus six. We have bus three that, if we get another grant, that we dispose of that bus.
What do you mean by dispose, like sell?
This grant requires that if you get this grant, you buy a bus that you will have to dispose of, but put a hole in the block. You cannot use that bus anymore.
You can't sell it?
No. And that's okay.
So we can't use, right now, we can't use number six?
Oh, yeah, we can, yeah, yes, we can.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, that's part of our fleet in use, to use this grant.
Okay.
And then we have two mini-buses. But I can get you the years, but. However, the bus two and bus four are probably on their last leg. Within the next one or two years, they're done.
Which is, is seven is our most reliable bus, whether we take long trips?
Oh, absolutely, seven is very good, probably only forty thousand miles on it. And bus one's a very good bus. Those, the two activity buses that we have right now are very good.
Oh, so we use plan for activities as well?
Yes.
Okay, I have to stop.
One's a backup plus activities. We also have bus five, but bus five is no longer in service.
Can we sell that, or isn't it worth anything?
I think that we could get, yeah, we can sell it. It's an eighty-six. So, it's, and it's good days. Now it's end of its turn now. So, like I said, we really need to update our fleet here. Hopefully this year we'll get one, and hopefully next year we can get another one to replace those bus routes. It's always scary, I've been in this position, and looking at buses for many years, and they're not cheap, they're only getting more expensive. New buses are a hundred and five thousand dollars, it's. It's, like I said, the bus that we found, point twenty, with only fifteen thousand miles. I do believe, because of COVID, they did, with their lease, they didn't use it one year because of COVID. So we're pretty much giving a fairly new bus for not much money. It's a lot of money.
Where was this on your plan? You know, like, as you were putting things together, where is this?
Right off the bat, I think the bus firm was, well, as far as building and maintenance was at the top. But then, I mean, buses and windows kind of came second.
Okay, so you did identify that need, okay.
And like I said, I've been writing this grant for years. This is the first year we got it. So I'm pretty happy about that, I had that money there. And like I said, I really thought that we have a good chance of this grant, so I did put that in the budget. Because I really had a good feeling that this would be the year.
Well, great job on, I think, getting the grant. That's, that's awesome, so.
Any other discussions here? I think you're looking for us to make a decision or provide some thought. I don't think about this stuff, but to me, it looks like we have a lot of buses, like, for so many, not very many students, but. I don't know anything about this, so I'm going to defer to Jenny's plan. And as far as what we needed, she's done more research on it than I have, so.
I think it was actually the first meeting that we went to that we came back with the list of buses.
I think you're right, Nicole, but we have a lot of buses out there, reliable ones, not so much. So I really feel that we need to get into that frame of replacing those older buses. So they are reliable, you know, when it is twenty-five below, thirty below, fifty below, we need to have reliable buses.
I definitely lean towards it, it kind of makes it an easier decision for me, just because we do have that grant, I'd really hate to see it wasted.
That, and the fact that, I mean, it was technically budgeted for.
So, right.
And the budget was approved, yes.
So you said that if we did do this, there'd be a possibility of having in-town buses again?
I would say in the future, I have a good plan. The only thing with that is that we need bus drivers.
Right.
You know, I have a great plan, that would cover the town.
Would we have the funds to do that though? I know it's just money, we don't get reimbursed.
We don't get reimbursed, but if, if my plan would be that we break out and have another rural route where we can get reimbursed. And then come in and pick up the town, you know, one section town, bus two would pick, now it's next town, bus four. And then, you know, so we just have to.
Just as long as it wasn't gonna cost us.
Yeah.
A bunch of money that we don't have right now.
Well, like I said, I get bus driver, I don't know if we'll get any bus drivers, they're hard to come. And then the new federal mandates. And the good thing now is that we are certified training site certificated. So Chuck is being certified to train the drivers that are coming in, so they don't have to go elsewhere. So we are federally certified, noted as a site, a training site, and for the state.
To try the bus?
Yes, we have, there's a lot of training now.
Wonderful.
Yeah, you have to.
They pay us to do that?
That's right. And, and what we could do, what we could do is open it up for other schools to get their training and in charge. We could do that, and that's a possibility, and that's, I didn't talk to Chuck about that, and I think that would be something that we'd be open to. Instead of having everyone get their own training person, we have one, and we're centrally located, we're out in our districts, so.
Oh, my only other question was on the vehicle replacement, I think that's where we pay for the, it's also a loan payment that comes over there.
Correct, our next loan payment is July, middle of July, I do believe, and that would be on next year. So we already paid, out of this replacement, we already paid the loan.
Okay, one on.
Okay. That's the seventy-three thousand in the replacement budget, is that what you have?
I have seventy-three, three seventy-two left, and like I said, the bus would be a little bit more. But I'd like, like I said.
Well, not with the grant, right, the grant?
Well, not the grant, but we would have to pay for the bus upfront. And we have to dispose of the other bus, and then, we won't get the eighteen thousand seven thirty-seven till later, probably three, six months after we get the bus. So we have to pick the bill first and then reimburse it. But like I said, we would have money for that.
Okay. Is that what you guys are thinking, to use Mickey's, that is a twenty used bus, is that the route? Or if you are thinking we shouldn't have us, what's, what's the course path here, or make a motion?
Why no need for the used twenty twenty eighteen thousand five?
That's probably the best option for our school at this time, for money-wise. Because it's like fifteen thousand miles is not much.
Not much.
The other buses were about thirty-five thousand when we got them, so.
So are we looking to fund this right now?
I think that's what.
We, yeah, we're, we actually have the bus on hold, just.
Sure.
Wondering about what's gonna happen tonight.
Where is this?
This one's in Chicago.
Yeah, that's where the shipping fee comes in, twelve hundred dollars.
Yes, what we do is, I'd, I'd like to fly Chuck down there. Instead of having them charge us fifteen hundred dollars to transport up here, we'd fly Chuck down there. He'd make the inspection, make sure it is exactly what they're telling us, and he'd drive it back.
So I'll make a motion to purchase the twenty-twenty seventy-one passenger bus with fifteen thousand miles on it, for the cost minus the grant money? Well, paid in full, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
John?
Yes.
Antonio?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, the fitness equipment has been, we've been going round and round and round with trying to find a regional rep for the cardio equipment. We're working with the YMCA to get their person or outfit that they order their stuff. Because we want their regional rep, because if something breaks down, we have them here. Mr. Holtz has been emailing back and forth, not having too much success doing that. So today he said he was gonna get the phone number to call that rep. They've been going back and forth, it's just nothing's been finalized yet. So it's still in the works, we will order that whenever we can be able to. It's just been, it's been that long, it's been going back and forth. So we are gonna order the cardio equipment, and that's, we're gonna use those funds just for cardio equipment. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, then we'll leave to Mrs. Penner. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. White, I have one that I found that's worth asking about, it's probably an easy answer. On page three of the elementary one twenty, go all the way down to the six forty line.
Are you talking about the expenditure report?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, expenditure. I forgot, there's twenty-seven of those things.
Which, now which page?
Uh, page three. And it's just the, the textbooks and textbooks, is that the curriculum we bought? Is that, the total was fifty-six thousand dollars? Is that where?
That would, that would be extra money that will get reimbursed.
Okay.
I just have to bill it out?
I just saw the eleven hundred percentage of the budget, I didn't know what that was. All right, good deal, thank you.
Anyone else? All about a couple of things, maybe I'm supposed to.
I did have a couple of questions, but I just did my research. Oh, yeah, it's so good.
Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
A second? Yes. John?
Yes.
Antonio?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
The other thing I have are a couple of open enrollments and tuition agreements. I do need, I have, you know, those too, please type them?
Yes, you did.
Do anyone need to see them? So the first two, one oh nine and one ten, are the same family?
They're the ones that moved from out of state, they've never attended here, is that correct?
Correct. And that's an open enrollment, right? So it's a little correct, so you don't really have an option on that. Is there a motion to approve one oh nine and one ten?
I'll move to approve one oh nine and one ten now.
A second. John?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
And who there is number one eleven?
I'll move to approve one eleven now.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Okay, anything more? All right, and we'll move on to the principal.
Um, I just have one thing. I have, uh, uh, Mr. Aspik is retiring at the end of the year. I'm sorry. Mr. Aspik is retiring at the end of the year, so you have his, um, retirement letter.
D nine.
I tried that already.
You do.
Not going to help.
We're sure going to miss you.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a shame.
It's truly been an asset to this school for sure.
Other than that, the only other thing I have not really on the agenda, but you mentioned we've been so short staffed. And I guess I just, I just want to thank the staff because it has been chaos since we came back for Christmas. And people have really stepped up and helped cover things and, you know, helped each other out, so it's been very appreciated. I ran the dishwasher today. I'm hoping for the floor scrubber tomorrow, the driving one.
And same to you and Mr. Hurding here too, Debbie, because I know you guys had the, you know, ad board in your play. And thank you guys for, for stepping up as well, so we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you to everyone.
But tell Mr. Aspik it's annoying.
I think we do need a motion on that one, though. We have to accept his resignation.
Retiration?
I mean, I don't know what happens if we don't, but.
He could.
I would reluctantly approve his resignation, um, but just thank him so much. He's been such a role model to both of my children. Fantastic. And what did I say? Oh, retirement, sorry.
I'll second his retirement.
John?
Yes.
Yes. O'Neil?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Okay, moving to unfinished business. First item on the agenda is the attendance and absence policy. Uh, Mr. Harper is not able to be here today, so, but we have this from last time and we just kind of, uh, revealed it. Does anyone need this?
I, I might, I don't have it in session.
I just had this one, but I did look at it before, so.
Yeah. I'm on the committee to help with the new attendance policy. And the only thing that we've changed is we've made awareness that we will do this if we may do this. So there is options if there's folks in any way to attend. That's the only thing from the attendance policy that is already on the books. So one of those on the books said, if you miss six days, you can do spread or make up. And now we say it may happen.
So there's a room to go by a case-by-case basis?
Yes, that's, and that was a compromise. Parents wanted the attendance policy not to be that, but the teachers wanted it. And so we felt a compromise, so we have some options. This may happen, not this absolutely will happen no matter what. Because there's, there's extenuating circumstances.
Sure. Um, I think the other thing that I saw, and I think maybe it was unintentionally left off, was the definition of extended illness.
Yeah, that was, there was going to be a talk about what that is, and then also the excused versus approved and all that.
Oh, yeah, right, that's confusing.
I thought we were asking to, to clarify just whatever the century code is defining things is.
Right, so the first two, excused, unexcused, is the century code. And then approved and unapproved is the school. Because unexcused is, um, heading towards termoncy. You know, unexcused means no one is called in.
I, I don't have a problem with the policy. I just, I want to be careful that we're not penalizing parents who see fit to keep their kids home because they're sick or for whatever other reason that they need to stay home. Um, and without a no, I, I've had a couple of my kids come home already and I didn't take them to the doctor. I do some giggle because they just were thrown. I want to make sure they're fine and they weren't running tips or anything like that, but, um. I appreciate the may condition there. I think it gives enough leeway to the people that are seeing what's happening, can figure it out.
Yeah, I, I think it does give us leeway. I was surprised that the parents have approved that because I didn't think it was really what you guys were asking for.
Yeah, here's what we're asking for, but we decided that has to be some compromise here. But I understand that the policy, the intention of the policy was fix these bits without fixing these happenstance. But given the data that it has improved, you know, really high after what's happened. If you look through your data, it's the kids who were missing five or six days and no longer missing as many days. The trickle-down kids, you know, the kids who, who really don't want their attendance policy. They're now scared to miss days. And, uh, so, but the teachers really wanted this policy, so the teachers have lived on the eight sound of life. And so we felt like because we needed a compromise over there. So we worked with the may rather than we will automatically do this every year if that's a chance. Which does penalize kids, like I have two kids who, was, if I had kept them home every day they shouldn't be there home, we're already in the tent. Because they think, and I took them to school because they don't have time to sort of make up. They have other things going on and don't have time to make up, so they go to school because they're sick, because there's a new option. So, and that's where, what the parents might want, but we can't fix that. I mean, we, you know, we have to have some kind of thing, so. We're going to keep them safe at school time.
Okay.
I guess my, my other question would be, who's the, who makes the decision between the will and the may?
I guess I'd have.
Oh, um, okay, so let's say Morgan misses, she's on her seventh day.
Oh, okay, on the student's, okay.
But I called in every time, then who makes the?
I guess honestly, we talk it over. My line comes out to myself, but it's kind of a, a situation to talk over. I'll compare and set, look for the medical records or not records, but the doctor's notes and.
So it sounds to me like it's really just kind of there to encourage people to not miss school for those that maybe have an attendance issue, but to not punish those that aren't genuinely sick.
Uh, do you think that this would help and help, just as you run that committee, do you think that would make you feel better as a parent?
I think it's a start. I think this attendance policy needs to be completely reworked. That's why I'm saying as a parent, I say, I have a kid who stresses out when they're sick because they don't want to go to school because they might be sick later and they get the six days. And so I have a kid who's come to school today after growing up. I've got a kid who's come to school with days that they really should have, but they're already at five days, so they don't want to get there in their sense. I have two kids that have, and both of them, neither one of them is impacting their, their performance in school. One has to earn anything, the other has one of these weeks. So it's not like this is impacting their schoolwork, but they missed a day here and a day here, they sit. You, you get sick and, and I've noticed that a lot of kids are not staying home because they're sick, because they don't want to get into attendance trouble. And so then more sickness is going through the school and then you have problems like we have right now. Where lots of people get, get spread, the school becomes a spread of the thing. And, you know, they're sick for two days, they're two days, that's not a long term illness, is it? But if you miss two days four times, guess what? You're eight days.
I think at that point too, most parents would probably take their child to the doctor.
Four days, I'm talking four days, like two days at the beginning of semester, two days a month and a half.
Back to back.
Yeah, yeah, two days in a row, back to back, but not back to back.
Take my child to the doctor.
Whereas, whereas, it's like, you know, they're probably getting so good today. And I keep them home two days because, you know, just to eat it from spreading, right? Just be cautious. You do, a lot of sicknesses last like a day, two days, you know, problems always are given a one-day thing, so two days, three days, often. So that's what I, my concern is, you, you get a kid sick a couple of times. You know, they have the cold, the flu, it's going to take you a couple of days, you know. It's not going to be, okay, we only get this one day every time, so that's, that's my thoughts. And, you know, you take it to the doctor, the doctor says, oh, you have something that is worse. What's the point, you know?
To prove that they're really sick.
And that's, that's the thing, if you want to put the parents at the point of, you know, I'm home, but how do you take a day off work? To take the kid into the dog, they assume that he's really sick. You know? So now the parents are in trouble from their work, you know, it just becomes a, you know. And that's what, what the parents want is people can agree to them when their kid is sick.
And you respect what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we also have kids that take advantage of the situation, so you give both ends of the story.
I understand that. That's, that's where we, we left it with may, because I felt like then if I called in to the doctor and said, look, I've been sick again five times. You know, because I know that's, it's cold every two weeks constantly. You know, if he can say, hey, I know why, and I know he's not skipping because he was skipped on basketball season, you know? And, and that was why we, we felt like a may would be, you know, when he called in a few times, he could take a walk with you and say.
Well, and thank you for working on that policy. We appreciate it, Emily.
Can you, Mrs. Grant, can you have a little?
And I just, I know it's not an open forum, but I just want to say as a teacher's perspective, we really need to have, um, an absence policy in place. And, yeah, we need to have like some type of, I mean, the will and may. I still even have my reservations about that just because I think if we do change it to may, like, then do we really have an absence policy still? But I understand we need to have something that's in place and we need to have a compromise for everyone. But still, we do have those situations like you guys just said, that, um, students really take advantage of this. So we need to have something in place that has to keep those students accountable and that they are making up their time. And teachers, before like the year started, we did have that policy. We did have the committee, um, and we did have teachers agree to this. So I don't know, I know a lot of teachers are on board. Just as a teacher's perspective.
Okay, so, uh, Bob's here.
I think the committee approved it, and I don't think it's substantially different than what we've had. It just has given us a little leeway, and I think it represents probably our best option at this juncture. I just being in this little state isn't, isn't good enough, so I think we should, we should motion it personally. If nobody else is listening, we can have that motion.
I'll second.
I guess I just have one more. As I, it just, it just caught my attention just a second, so. It says, um, definition of absences and for the purposes of compulsory attendance reporting under North Coast Century Code, blah, blah, blah. And then list four, I think that the North Coast Century Code is only those first two, excused and unexcused. So I don't feel like, the only thing I would guess, I'm not saying it's really changed the policy except to remove that from the subheading, um, compulsory attendance reporting under the North Coast Century Code.
Well, I did, we talked last month about changing the definition so it makes more sense to us as parents when we're looking at whether it is approved, unapproved, excused, unexcused, like, making that just giving more clarity to what it, what it truly is.
Right. Yeah, I guess that's, I, I would like that to, in my mind, that you would always have two things. You'd always be either excused and unexcused and either approved or unapproved. I think you'd either be excused and approved or excused and unapproved. Or unexcused, I guess would be the other option. I know.
Can I make a point to that? Um, what we had before, what you had before, on the attendance policy that's early in place. You have excused and unexcused, and the excuse absences are only the absence when they're not called in approved. And that's what parents were getting very angry because they, when they called in, their kids were still unexcused. And they were confused by that because excuse means something in most people's mind. It's still an absentee, I was in the school, you know? And so we felt like we needed to call excuse and unexcuse what they knew they were trying. Excuse me, your parent called you in. So we need, approved was just what we came up with. We needed a term for what those special absences are that aren't going to count. Is what they give them, the ones where extended illness stays, doctors' notes, things like that. We needed a, a term for them, and that was what the approved was, the special approved one. There currently on your attendance policy, that's what's called excuse. And then there's the absence with contact and without contact is what we're calling excuse and un. The century code uses excuse and un, like, our absence with contact and without contact. We were trying to make it more in line with what the century code, what the parents understand. They're proved, I don't know if it's a little confusing because it's in the A's, don't I know? But that was for lots of people.
Okay, so there is motion on the floor to approve this. Do you think this makes a difference in this current year? If we change this right now, is this going to make a difference in this current year? Or should we look at making this more, make more sense?
I mean, I'm okay with the way it's written, but I guess for me, it's just still a little bit confusing. And even though I'm sitting here, um, looking right at the policy, it makes a little more sense to me versus maybe somebody who doesn't come to meetings or have any insight. Again, the approved, unapproved, excused, unexcused, it, it just can be a little bit confusing. So personally, again, I'm okay with the policy, but I would just like to see it simplified.
I would agree with that. Do you think it makes a difference if we change it this year? Or should we, you know, approve it this year and then look at, you know, say we want this simplified, or do we just not approve it or?
My opinion is that we leave it as it is for now, and if anybody wants to work on simplifying it, we can do it prior to August of twenty twenty-two.
I would really like to redo this this summer. I do not like this at all. I would like to look at it, you can approve the may, I, oh, we don't want students here sick. You're right, we don't. I would like to look at this again this summer and come up with something that's very easy to.
So are you okay with us just leaving it as it, as it is for now?
And we have, we have, um, parents calling every day saying our child is sick, don't bring him here. We don't want the child sick, and we are letting them stay home, not counting against them.
That, that's the biggest thing. If they just let us know what's going on, that's, that's a huge thing.
But I do know it's in policy, so we do have to follow, but this year's not like most years. There's COVID years, and it's one of them, it's bad, so.
It's hard to write a policy for discretion, and basically we're relying on y'all to use your discretion, on what's appropriate, what isn't. And I, I, I have a problem with that. I don't, you know, put two different people on the seats and maybe we start having a problem with it. Yeah, if we need to leave it as it is and just let y'all continue to weigh through the individual cases, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think we've spent quite a bit of time talking about it, so I think, uh, I think, I vote to leave it as it is and work on it, you know.
Now's the motion on the floor to approve this.
That's essentially the same policy, it's just it's, it's inserting may as discretionary for them, which is what I appreciate in that because it, it's, it's giving them the leeway where they're not, otherwise if they don't do it, then they're violating the policy.
Well, that's not what Mr. Hurding and Mrs. Hanson just said, though.
Yeah, I think you're right though, Daniel. I, I would like to put may in there, so when people are saying we're not following policy, well, we're using discretion on, we don't want students here, but. Yeah, I think you're right though, Daniel, I, I would like to put May in there, so when people are saying we're not following policy, while we're using discretion, I don't want students here, but we have the May here, we have that.
Okay, so are you saying to go ahead and approve this?
Uh what, just so that we have the May in there, so we.
I misunderstood you then, Emily.
But I would like to rework this, this better, better communicate with the teachers and the parents.
Because we have to have two readings on this, right?
You don't.
Well, we're back at that point where this is the handbook and it's not the policy, so we haven't actually changed the policy, we changed the handbook. So personally, I would like to substitute the word may in there and leave it as is. This is actually a big change, because we have excused, unexcused, approved and unapproved, and that would change how we're school now, which, because right now it says absent with communication, and now we're going to have to change that. I would just like to change the policy, to just substitute the word may in for will, and not do this part, because this part seems confusing. There, because there is another change in there, I mean, it's excused, unexcused, approved and unapproved.
So you're saying just to talk to, quit changing the word to may?
Well, I can't tell, because this part is different, so I don't know what it used to say. The handbook is online, right? Yeah, it, it is a lot different. You just wanna see what the current policy is, and I guess I would like to see the word may in there rather than will, and I would be interested in entertaining that, but. This is the current policy, you can have this to see what it is. So was all that stuff in yellow added then? It's all changed, yeah. Okay, because I'm trying to look it up, um. It's on page three of the handbook.
If I just blind, I'm not fine.
Um.
On the website?
Yeah.
So on page three, it says maximum absence. Oh, sorry, it's under forms and, you can't find the document at all, it's under forms and handbooks, under, in the top, under, where did I find that? Informant information, and the second one is download, yeah. So under the maximum absence rule, a student may not receive credit for any classes.
Is that what you'd like to see changed, or what's online?
That's what I think, I don't know, I can't see anything else that required, has the word will on there.
Yeah, because the Century Code hasn't met like twenty-four absences before their, um.
Unexcused.
Unexcused.
Which means no one called in.
No, twenty-four, they have like, they have a smaller number of excuse, unexcused, but they have twenty-four of those total actions. Total actions is a word, it's supposed to amount to, which is a lot, but half what the Century Code allows.
I think most schools have ten.
Yeah.
But Mr. Gertie could work that out over the summer.
The number.
Well, that would make it pretty simple and easy for now, if we just change the will not received to may not receive, that would be an easy change until we work on it this summer.
And I think that's really what, it sounds like the committee had agreed on, and this was just a part of trying to make it in line with the Century Code, but I, I think it missed the mark.
I think it makes it more confusing.
Yeah, I see where you're going.
I guess I would still have a problem with the, because in the excused absences, it says that the only illness that is approved is either a, like dentist appointment or a medical appointment, or extended illnesses per defined above, which basically you have to be in the hospital.
Right. But that, this did not change that.
I wanna redo the whole thing.
What?
I wanna redo the whole thing.
So do I.
I, I agree, I think it needs to be redone.
Is there, can we, like without trying to rewrite this now, and then we'll just, can we just agree to let them do what they're doing? Just take it on a case by case.
Absolutely.
We can leave the policy as it is, and it'll be case by case, and if there's any, any problem uh that a parent has, like if their, their kid's not getting credit all of a sudden, and y'all say, no, that's our decision, and they wanna break it forward, I guess we take it up, there can't be that many kiddos in that, that position.
Also, Dan, don't you think that we could leave it as is, but change that one word to just may, to appease the parents that are.
Yeah, I think, I think that helps, I think that puts it in there, yeah.
David, please, do you think it's gonna, we can form a, do you agree with yourself?
I agree, I, I mean, the question was coming in, but it's not.
My last question is, um, all excused absences require the excuse absence form. Would having one of those in front of you, that would make the will easier to say may? Or whatever, I mean, will it make the decision, like if they're on the verge?
I don't, I don't know if the form is anywhere that honestly a phone call from the parent, like, just like I said earlier, explain to us what's going on. That's really, it's just information more than anything else, so I don't know if the form is.
And just, this is kind of a random question, but out of curiosity, and there's no right or wrong answer here, but I'm just curious, when a parent calls in, and I, I know they probably don't speak to either of you, but do you have to know if they're, like, given a number as far as how many days that's, that child or student has missed? Probably not, I guess.
Not when they call in, but if it's, I mean, when we run those brief analysis reports, so Mr. Hopper's making calls when it's over so many days. I can only think that's what I used to do, like if it was over five days or whatever, I'd give the parent a call, and just kind of let them know where the kids were at, so.
Gotcha, that's, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, heard letters, yeah.
I, I'm fine with that idea, I guess my only issue is, I don't like saying, oh, we're starting to follow the policy this year. I would really like to change that word, because I don't like, as a board, saying, okay, just don't follow the policy. You know, I just don't like that, it doesn't set that with me.
Well, I, I don't mind either, and I think changing the word would be appropriate, just to, to give them, kind of codify the discretion. Let them go from there, I mean, kind of this bizarre timeframe anyway, so we gotta make this.
And I, again, I think a lot of the, the students that do call in sick, if they're sick for more than one day, if they're sick to as pretty as chances are, they're going to the doctor, and they'll have that doctor's note, again, if you have somebody missing, like six and seven days, I'm not saying they're not sick, but um there is going to be those kids that, just don't wanna come to school, this date of two days, so I mean, I one hundred percent agree that, you know, we definitely need to have a policy in place. And, you know, Mr. Gertie and Mrs. Hanson can, you know, use, use their discretion as far as, like, they're gonna have more information and public background, if they're concerned to give that, then maybe they're gonna use their best judgment. But um I would be all for just changing the word to may for now, and then reworking the policy completely with the handbook completely this summer.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table, because the motion was to approve the, yeah, but the motion was to approve this.
Just to change the word to may?
No, the motion was to approve the policy as is.
And I seconded it for a discussion.
Yes.
You made the motion, or you?
Oh, yeah, Daniel made the motion.
What I had said was, unless anybody wants to discuss it further, I'll, I'll make that, but so that we discuss it further.
So should we vote on that motion to approve this?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, no, I think we've all agreed that we're not gonna do this, so let's just draw that, and then move to approve, um with the uh may, changing the word to may.
A student may not receive credit for any classes, which, in which absences exceed six per class for one semester on the return.
So this is the only, where really, that's the only thing in maximum absences, okay, yeah.
Do you want me to send it down to you soon?
No.
Good, thank you.
Is there a second on that?
I second.
Oh, you did second, okay. John?
Yes.
Munoz?
This is just to change the word to may, right? Okay, yes.
Not one line. I know it's already done, so much discussion.
Tyler?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, School Vision Committee.
So we didn't, we have not met yet this month, um just because of the illnesses and stuff, but we, it is still on the radar, I talked to Mr. Gertie, and as soon as everybody's feeling a little better, we'll meet again.
Calls are approved with committee.
So we also haven't met, we were gonna meet tomorrow, but after speaking to Mr. Gertie and just some of the uh stuff happening here, um with Corlin, that um surprise, I sent you an email, hope you got it. Now, we're, we're not meeting tomorrow, but we have a really great survey draft that um, I'm just gonna add some inputs from some of the members here, and just um, part of this going ahead, without having to meet, we don't really have to meet, just change this to that, and then get that survey out, so we're gonna uh hopefully get that survey out um in the next couple of weeks, so that we can kind of get some ideas about where to start.
And that's going to the?
Just the teachers, the staff, not, not just the teachers, the staff as well, um just to kind of get a, a read for where they, you know, have any uh suggestions, complaints, uh praises, that kind of stuff.
Check the um public record, rules on that, just to make sure that whatever you do.
So be careful not to, so we're just, just soliciting uh not inputs as a whole, but if they have something, so I, I formed a draft, sent it to them, and they sent me, you know, if they have a, an addition kind of thing, so we're, we're, we're trying very hard not to have a meeting, yeah, in that regard, and vote on what we're gonna do, um other than, I mean, we've already decided we're gonna send out the survey, so this is really just um approving, determining what question to ask.
I do, I guess I just meant um the results of the survey, check on, so that when you send it out, you know, if you just tell people that it's going to be confidential, that it, you can legally uphold that.
Yeah, um I don't, yeah, I don't ask, I don't, I don't, it would be, I mean, it'll be confidential from the standpoint, we will know which person inputted the data, but the data itself may not be, I mean, that doesn't happen again.
Sounds good, sounds like you guys are making some progress, so, sounds great, thank you. Um then we have this standard evaluation, I can send that out, is there any comments or questions?
No, just thank you for putting it into that electronic format, I had it easier, and thank you, Ms. Tyler, for what you do.
Thank you very much, you're all good.
I did meet with Nicole and um share some things from, some uh things of concern for me on the evaluation. Some things that um I was, you know, didn't provide or um do for the board, but some of those things are, I don't have, I don't have a superintendent evaluations. I've never been involved in that process, other than to provide you with the document to do the evaluation. I don't carry them, I've never seen them ever, in eleven years I've been there. So there were some of those things that I, you know, and I, and it's fine, I know that, you know, with the new people on the board, and even Daniel, you know, don't know, don't know that, and that's hard. So I did take it very well, but like Nicole said, I take everything personally, and I do, you know, I just sent it to them. But I do appreciate, I, I did tell Nicole, I do appreciate the criticism, and I have, you know, learned some things in the last year or so, and, you know, just need to move forward and do the best job I can representing this school.
And the praises.
Thank you for that.
And the praises.
Oh, yeah, I know, there's some of those in there too. I did, I did do mine, and I sent it to Nicole, but I'm like, I'm not like in a state.
You're so fine.
No, I'm not doing that.
But I, I do also wanna add, not only um do I think they do a good job, but I also, like, I live in town, so um, you know, we do need bringing kids to basketball practice or coming to games, or like, I see all the extra that you put into Tyler when you're at the school, so thank you for that.
I've changed toilet paper and hands, around the dishwasher myself, so there isn't anything I'm gonna do with a paint.
I think they just turned toilet bowl to.
Except toilets tomorrow. Is there any more comments or discussion about the standard evaluation then?
I will say it helps to upgrade administration.
That's me, sugar, but doesn't surprise me.
Okay, I'll upload the final form into the team's folder, she did complete, so she has completed two actually self-evaluations, the first one on was on, it's just a score of three, so she wanted to redo that on the same format that we did. Yes, but then um the, the most recent one that she sent me um was on the score, a scale of four, but it was for every indicator rather than every performance area, and I just got that one, I think, yesterday.
I wrote each individual line, and I didn't get to the end, I'm like, oh, see, those four boxes are probably from the form, but there's. I also did that one.
So um, but I can upload. You, you don't want to redo it again, we're just gonna leave it as that. So I'll upload her self-evaluation again to the team's folder, so um.
Thank you for doing that.
And then um I think that we can just do this yearly, I mean, I don't know, there'd be any sense in doing this again this year, so.
No, I, I would disagree if there were issues or concerns, but I guess I don't have any, so I would see that future into it. any, so I would see that future into, I guess, most of the year.
I agree. Okay, so, um, is there a motion to approve business manager evaluation?
I'll move to approve it as written.
Do you have a second?
One second.
John?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Vannetta?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, under new business. Um, oh, we do this first, okay, so, um, we have been notified that, uh, we are going to go into negotiations, so we need to nominate a negotiating committee. I think we've done the past two people. Uh, Mr. Tyler did send to me his thoughts, he would like to be on that committee, if there are anyone else who would like to be on the committee. I, I would also like to be on the committee, but it doesn't have to be me here, it can be anyone else too, or it doesn't have to be Mr. Tyler, what are yours about?
Why would both of you guys do it?
I don't know enough, so. I'm going to vote on that.
I would say so. Oh, Daniel, I know there's a negotiation seminar, too.
I, I went to that last time.
Oh, you did, yeah, that's right. Okay, so, I don't know if I can refer as a motion.
I don't think so, we're just.
I think it does actually. Because anytime you create a committee, I think it does need a motion. I'm just going to do it, because it does, I nominate, uh, Daniel Tyler and Nicole Wolf for the negotiating committee.
Who's so hard?
I'll second it. John?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Vannetta?
Yes.
Wolf? All right, next item on the agenda is negotiations. This item may be discussed in an executive session. The legal authority for closing this portion of the meeting in North Dakota century code is section forty-four oh four dash one nine point nine. At this time, the motion will be in order to discuss the next topic in executive session rather than an open meeting. Is there such a motion?
Forty-five makes a motion, have we received anything from the teachers yet?
They haven't told February first to give their committee members to us.
Okay.
And then, February ninth, we'll have to approve that.
So if there, unless, there's something that we want to discuss that we want to put on the table, I don't see a need to meet unless.
No, we don't, okay.
And I didn't get new numbers from the state yet as well.
Okay, so, is there a motion, or should we wait? It looks like we haven't told February first to put something together. Um, it would be just if we wanted to come first, I guess that would be the.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, unless there's something that you want to discuss in that regard.
When would you want? We have to February first to present the need to, to.
No, February first, they tell us.
We have to first. Okay, so we can't still wait until we can negotiate between, um, it's true. Okay, so, February ninth, we have to recognize the team. The, yes, the teachers, so we won't have a meeting by then.
On February first, they'll provide it, they have to provide who they are to negotiate in there, so, and then February ninth, we will recognize that.
Do we have a meeting by February ninth?
Yeah, that's the next one we need.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
These are just the things that are in the century code, these two names.
Oh, thanks. Thank you. Okay, so I don't hear a motion to go into executive session, so we will move to do that, or we'll table that till next meeting.
February two, so.
Okay, next word we need for February ninth, uh, at five o'clock.
I'm going to have a motion to adjourn.
I just want to thank Mr. Billiter for sending it, because Mr. Gertie is ill.
Thank you, Mr. Billiter.
Is Ben O'Shaughnessy? Is there a second on this?
Oh, sorry, second adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Yes.